Stand up, or sit down, or whatever you would like. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Al Pointkowski. Hopefully, all, or at least most of you have seen my website, so you have a little bit of an idea of what my background is. My career has been in law enforcement. Started out with the Syracuse Police Department and ended up retiring from the New York State Police as an investigator. Went on to the Onondaga County District Attorney's Office as their chief confidential investigator. And then from there, I managed a couple of companies and spent most of the rest of my life as a private investigator. My wife, Susie, and I started coming up here in 2010. And we, I don't like to use the word "love," but we really liked Sky Valley a lot. And eventually, bought a home and became full-time residents about two years ago. About a year ago, I started attending some of the council meetings, just to see what was going on. Some of the stuff that I saw impressed me. I think we've got a lot of talented people here in Sky Valley. And I became more and more interested in what was going on. And I felt, with my experience as a president of the Homeowners Association in Florida, that maybe I could contribute to Sky Valley. That was the motivating factor for why I decided to run for the council, to contribute. As I put out in my website, I was a government employee for my career, but I served the people. That's what I want to do with Sky Valley. I want to be able to serve the people with my agenda of TLC. Transparency, straightforward. I'm running out of time. TLC, transparency, listen, cooperation.
First, let me clarify some identity issues. Professionally, I'm Debbie Dalhouse. Forty-two-year career in communications at both the local, state, and national level. Socially, I'm Debbie Curtis. I'm married to Jim Curtis, who's sitting over there. He's the reason that I'm here in Sky Valley. We married in July of 2015. That's when I moved down here. By fall of 2015, Jerry Landy had me selling ads for the POA directory. I was attending city council meetings in August of 2015. I'm a workaholic. I want to be informed. I want to contribute. That is what my entire life has been all about. My parents raised me to put service before self, from the time I was a child. Why am I running for city council? I am deeply, deeply disappointed at the misinformation campaign that has pulled this community apart. My communications ethics are: you do your research, you provide the facts, you make sure that people have an opportunity to know those facts, you build consensus, you ask people's opinions, you know what they want, and then you develop a plan to make it happen. That is going to be my mantra going forward. I want to hear from you. If you are not receiving the city emails, there's a sign-up sheet going around. I am sick to death of hearing, "I don't know what's going on." You heard earlier that the city has an email distribution list? Please sign up, and please let us know what your concerns are. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and it's good to see you all here. I wish I'd see a crowd like this at our city council meetings, and I think everyone up here, and the mayor, and everyone else feels the same way. I've been coming to Sky Valley since the eighties, and I too love it, and the city, and the people, as much as anybody. I spent six years on city council in the past. I was council president twice. The first years on council, I did a lot of listening. I was new to city government. I came from 35 years in the business industry, running companies and large budgets and hurting engineers like cats, they say. And, but, we, my wife was a teacher. We were in Huntsville, Alabama. I was the head of military programs for Thiacol. We built the solid rocket motors for defense, and my program was the Patriot Program, the Patriot Rocket Motor. I took it from engineering through production until they closed our plants, when peace broke out in the mid-'90s for about two years. Now Patriot, you hear it again. Why did I not run for council and stay on council last term? Well, you know, I got to a point where I was doing things just kind of rote-roadly. I needed to step away. Sometimes it's better to step away and look at it back as a citizen again. I'll wrap up. That was the best thing I ever did, and now I know how I can best contribute and serve this city.
My name's Paul Wheeler, and, yeah, there is some frustration out there that I hear from people, and I appreciate what Debbie had to say about communication. But as long as you're receiving a bid for a project on a Monday afternoon and are rewarding that bid the next morning at 10:00 a.m., people will still be frustrated. How can you get a bid in the afternoon, evaluate that bid, and award it the next morning at 10:00 a.m.? I don't think it can properly be done. You certainly can't get the feedback of the citizens, taxpayers. That's something that I want to change. Another frustrating thing that's happened, just so you can have some, and Mr. Sal can ask some ideas, is when a meeting is called with less than 48 hours' notice, to spend about $100,000 plus the taxpayers' money on police vehicles. How do you get the feedback from the taxpayers and citizens in that short amount of time on that amount of, that dollar purchased? That's something that I want to correct. I, you know, would have tried to do as a councilman everything I could, get that meeting rescheduled, pushed back. There wasn't a real need there. There was no emergency with police cars. Anyway, those are some things I want to work on. I appreciate your vote.
Doug.
Yes.
Have the people keep their hand off the bottom of the microphone. That's what's causing the interference.
Did you hear that? Oh. Keep your hand off the bottom, we won't have the interference. Quote, unquote. Advil should know.
No, Tim Darrel.
What's that? Okay, I'm gonna try it, and we'll see if it works for me. How's that?
Sounds great.
Okay. The first question is going to go to Debbie. Okay? Debbie, the city has built a park for the enjoyment of all residents and visitors of Sky Valley. The park is not yet complete. How would you go about finishing the park?
I know that park is one of the areas of divisiveness, but let's set that aside and say, in the first place, it's an amenity for everyone, whether you are a full-time resident, a part-time resident, or a visitor. Let's make it the best that we can. And the way to do that is to do a partnership. The city has a very limited budget. They do an amazing job with the money that they have. The POA represents a large number of residents here. Not everyone, but a large number. There are visitors who come here. Can we do a partnership between the city, perhaps Harrison Merrill, who is the owner of the property, and the residents and visitors, so that everyone contributes to making this park the best it can be, and making it a welcoming place, a place for people to come together, get to know your neighbors? Is that making a donation for a bench, or a table, or a walking path, or a memorial brick? I'm not going to lay out an absolute "it's got to be this." I think this is something that we work on together. But don't expect the city to do it all, and don't expect the POA to do it all. It needs to be a partnership.
Thank you, Debbie. I agree with much of what you said, except I don't think that, I don't like the word "divisiveness." I think there are different opinions that need to be heard, and do it in a conscientious, straightforward, but kind way. The park. We don't have a park. We essentially have two parks. We have one park that's owned by the city, and the city has done a wonderful job in raising a pickleball court, and a pavilion, and restrooms, and next to the post office. I think that's great, and it's for everybody, as you said. But the other side is Merrill's property. We have a yearly lease that can be canceled at any time. I'm against investing city tax money, which there's not enough of to go around as there is, and any further in that park. We've done enough. If people want to walk, they don't have to have a bridge. That park, you can walk all the way around in a U shape, turn around, and walk back, and come back, and it doesn't cost you a penny. So I don't believe in investing anything more on it unless we have a better deal, a longer deal, and Merrill contributes. I do agree with that. I do agree that we, as individuals, need to contribute to whatever else we need to put over there, not the city.
Will you repeat the question? Doug, if you wanted to know how you finished, complete the park, or the walking path?
Yeah. The city has built a park for the enjoyment of all residents and visitors of Sky Valley. The park is not yet complete. How would you go about finishing the park?
Okay, the first thing I'd want to do is get some input from all you taxpayers out there on how your money's being spent. I would do some analysis and look at some different options. There is a bridge proposed on the next city council agenda. I think that's the last thing they have planned to do for a park, so it might not even be an issue that I need to address. I really don't have any more comments on that.
I agree with Debbie, and probably everybody in the room, that the park has become a divisive issue. How do you finish it? The taxpayers have to speak up. The taxpayers, not just the permanent, full-time residents, but the seasonal residents, need to speak up. They need to let the council members know where they stand and how they want their money The park, I believe, was a good idea, and probably still is. The issue is transparency. The issue, as I see it, is even more so than that, is we're spending taxpayer money on somebody else's property. That's what I'm having a tough time getting my head around. Why would you do that? With that said, you look at what's happened, as far as what's been developed so far, and we can learn from that. Can we finish it? Can we put the bridge in? Can we complete the circle, and then stop it there, and then learn what to do and how to proceed with future projects that we may have coming up? Whatever happened that creates issues can be a learning tool if we use it properly.
I've been asked to, I've been asked to use the mic, because apparently some of you can't hear me. This next one will begin with Neil. The city council purchased, yeah, okay. I want to make sure I was right placing. City council purchased the only property in Sky Valley that could be used as a visitor center. Do you feel the visitor center is an asset for our city? If so, how would you make it better?
Okay. The visitor center. I assume that that would be one of the questions, or something about it. I think, I voted for purchase of the visitor center. It's a key piece of property coming up towards Sky Valley. It can be a face of Sky Valley. And I think it's, what we need to do is really study the use of it. Right now, we ran out a little piece over here, and a little piece over here, and it has to pay for it. That's true. But that may be a place where we, as the city may grow, we may need for other city services. So that needs to be kept in mind. So it's available, and that's good. Now, when the people come in there, here's my problem with it. We're not getting any information from those people as to what their interests are. Are you just stopping to use the restroom, or ask for directions? You know, can we steer them, find out if they're really interested in north Georgia Mountains, where the temperature is eight to 10 degrees lower than down in the valley? Can we steer them to real estate people who are knowledgeable, the air can show them something, show them what we really have to offer, and then record their name, their email number, so we can communicate with them and show them more about Sky Valley? So, use it more for marketing.
Thanks, Neil.
The visitor center out on 246 does seem to get a good bit of traffic through there. I think there's some different things we can put in place. Not a big deal to start capturing some email addresses, and maybe put some modus operandi type systems in place to communicate with those people about what's going on in Sky Valley. Events we're having, you know, with marketing and the growing technology, it's always something that needs to be looked at. New systems are being developed all the time to make that more efficient. It's easier now than ever to really zero in on an exact demographic, even down to the zip code that you're, where you're marketing. So I think it's a good idea. There's some more information I think we could get there to make the system more efficient. Thank you.
I think the visitor center is a good idea. What I'm hearing is, do we spend the money wisely? Again, it's something that's happened, and so now, how do we make the best of it? The visitor center, to me, is really marketing. And the way I understand marketing is that you need to be able to track it. You need to be able to know what are you getting for your money? When people stop there, and we have the numbers that come out on how many come in and use the visitor center during the course of a year, how many of those people buy a home in Sky Valley? How are we tracking that? How many of those people that stop there come to the golf course? How many of the people stop and say, "I'd like to get a timeshare for a week, just to see what the area's like"? I don't hear that. I don't see that happening, where we're able to say that we've got something, and this is where it's going. This is how we're benefiting from it. I think what everybody wants is bang for your buck, and I'm not sure that we're getting it in the visitor center. I think that needs to be fine-tuned a little bit.
I think the visitor center is one of our best marketing investments. We have two people here in the audience, Linda Sloot and Debbie McAfee, who staff that visitor center. They are some of the best representatives we could have for Sky Valley. I worked for 20 years in advertising. The best advertising you can have is word of mouth. You have two of the friendliest faces spreading good word that you could possibly ask for. Do we track it? Why, in fact, we do. I have talked with Linda Sloot, and she keeps a list of people who come, and their emails, and the things they are interested in. And does it result in sales? Well, we have sold 28 houses this year, I believe, was the latest I heard, and 47 last year. Linda has said that people are delighted to be here, and they ask for referrals to real estate agents. Now, can I give you a Johnny came and Johnny bought? No, I haven't done that research, but we can do that. The data exists. It's just a matter of asking for it instead of criticizing.
Okay, Paul, you get the next question. Currently, there is minimal crime in Sky Valley. Do you feel the structure of the police department is adequate, or how would you change it?
Is it adequate? Yes. Could it be better? Yes. I'd like to see us bring a fourth patrolman back, and then have a full-time police chief in addition to that. There's a lot of work and meetings, local meetings, that the police chief is not able to attend because he's doing patrol hours. There's training time that he needs to spend with the patrolmen and officers under him that he's not able to do. That's what he's told me, and I take him at his word. Thank you.
I think the police department is adequate. There's always room for improvement. I don't know what needs to be done to improve the police department. I have not spoken with the chief, because I did not want to get into a situation where I was getting information before, or if I was elected. The improvement should be coming from the chief. He's the guy that was hired to run the Sky Valley Police Department, and he's the one that needs to assess where his department is, and where he can take it, or where he would like to take it, to meet the needs of all of the taxpayers. Can I offer some advice to him? Absolutely. When I went into the district attorney's office, it was non-existent as far as the professionalism. I believe the police department here is professional, but they may need some extra training in certain areas. But that starts with the police department and the chief who runs the department, assessing his personnel, and making decisions, and bringing him to the council, who bring it to the taxpayers.
I agree with my colleagues. We have an excellent police force here. Al and I served on the search committee that selected our current chief, Vaughn Estes. And Vaughn, Chief Vaughn, Chief Estes, I should say, knew, when he was interviewed, that doing patrol was part of his job. He not only agreed to that, he wanted to be out on patrol, because he wanted to know who the people were, and he wanted them to know him. He has the same approach that so many of us do, that we are all neighbors here, and we need to work together as neighbors, and know each other as neighbors, and know particular needs and concerns. If he needs to attend a meeting, we have three full-time officers. We also have a cadre of part-time officers. It is at the chief's discretion if he needs to go somewhere, he can call in for backup. Do we need to hire a fourth full-time officer? No. Several people have said, "Our taxes are too high. What are you gonna do about lowering our taxes?" Well, if we hire another police officer, that's $50,000. How would you like to pay for it? Let's use the resources we have and rely on a highly professional chief to tell us what else we might need.
I think we have great policemen. I don't know anything about the part-time people, because we don't get to know those very well. But I think we have a marginally adequate police department. We have a great chief. We have great full-time. As far as the part-time people that come up here, they don't really get to know the people, I don't believe. I think that they don't get to know what the houses should look like, how many cars there should be there, and the situation when they patrol like a full-time person that gets to know everybody and their situation. I know the policemen can come by my house, and they know, they can just glance as they run, run, ride by, whether I've probably got a bad situation or not. You can't, for the total safety and security of Sky Valley, I believe we should have a chief that gets to go meet with other police departments, find out what the crime is in the county, and what's creeping in here, and he doesn't get to do that. He can if he's on patrol. We, what happens when they have vacation buildup, and people need to take vacation? You don't really have anything but a part-time person. The $50,000, we spent $30,000 on a halfway walk, and we can find room in the budget for a full-time officer, I guarantee.
Al, I think we're gonna begin with you on this one. The outside reputation of Sky Valley is that we are divided on many issues. How would you go about unifying Sky Valley and improving that reputation?
I personally don't know about the outside reputation of Sky Valley. If the outside reputation is that we are divided, then I would suspect that it's coming from inside of Sky Valley. And then to correct that, we need, all of us, all of the taxpayers, need to get together, figure out why we're so divided, and mend fences. And then show people that we aren't divided. You know, I deal with a lot of different things. I was gonna say, I didn't get out my tongue. I've dealt with different people in my career, and they tell you how to do things. They tell you what you should do, what you shouldn't do. My response is, "Show me how to do it." And I think that's what we need to do in Sky Valley. We need to show people how to do it. We need to show people how to do it.
I think we all know that the reputation has been created by people here in Sky Valley with a very, let me look for a kind word, pointed and divisive emails. And the only way we can get beyond that, I agree with Al, we have to solve that ourselves. Let's build consensus. Let's build community. Let's not tear each other down. Let's not point fingers. There are too few of us. We are all neighbors. Let's talk with each other and work together to build Sky Valley into what we want for now. Even more importantly, what do people who might consider moving here in the future want? It can't just be our little club. We need full-time residents coming. We need more diverse families coming. Let's be a welcoming committee, community. And 99% of the folks here are. So, I look forward to working with you to build on that and take it forward.
I agree with everything that's been said. We do need to work together. There's a lot of miscommunication, I believe. There needs to be more solid communication. There needs to be more study of issues and things we plan to do. I would like to see us do like many other cities, I just found out, I didn't know this, but they have an open workshop and meeting before they have the regular council meeting. It's still an open meeting and under Sunshine laws, you know, it has to be advertised, minutes taken and all that sort of stuff. We could set up where we have, when we're working on big proposals, big purchases or big things, we could have it regularly advertised, that there'll be another meeting where we get together, we talk, we bring in the citizenry, we get more ideas and we work on to achieve a consensus rather than getting agenda a week ahead of time, come into the meeting. Nobody, as an elected person, we can't meet together, we meet one-on-one and have a discussion, but we can't get together unless we have an opportunity to work together toward that consensus. So, one meeting every month is not enough time to reach consensus in my imagine, in my way of thinking and we need to spend more time working together.
Thank you guys, appreciate what you all have to say there. I'm like Al, I hadn't personally heard that from the outside, people think we're a divided community. I mean, I just hadn't heard of that. Have other people or, no? Okay. Anyway, I appreciate the question. So, that doesn't seem to be an issue, but hypothetically, I guess if it was, then yeah, it's obviously, you know, driven from within here. Divisive emails have been going on for, ever since I moved here in 2004. Nothing new there. It's just how do you manage, how do you sift through those divisive emails? Things over the last couple of years especially don't, they seem to be getting more divisive. I expect to get divisive emails. I don't want everybody to agree with everything I'm going to do or say or propose. I want to hear from you, but I don't want to do things that are going to further drive a wedge there between the council and the taxpayers. And I think a lot of that can be achieved through better communication.
Paul, thank you. Debbie, my last question. What do you see as the most important issues ahead of us and what is your vision for Sky Valley and how will you implement the vision?
I think we've touched on a lot of important issues and the most important thing to me is to build that consensus. We're not all going to agree on everything all the time. That's just human nature. It's fine to have differences of opinion, but let's agree to be agreeable if we disagree and let's look for the common ground. You might have a totally different take on an issue than I do. I want to hear what your thoughts are and what can we do that's best for the community as a whole? Let's make it much more welcoming and much more collaborative than things have gotten lately. I think we'll all be happier. That covers the park, it covers trees, it covers marketing, it covers anything else that might come up. Let's talk, let's work together.
I totally agree Debbie, that that's what it's going to take, more talk and more working together and that's following on from what I just spoke about before is having more workshops or more ways that your elected officials can work together and come to a consensus rather than have to make a decision on the spot which sometimes don't have all the facts. Sometimes if we could get together like that, we could see right away, golly, we haven't got enough information to make a vote this coming session. So, maybe we postpone and we get that research and we get an idea maybe from the audience that, from a person that's worked in an industry or an area that we need to, and bring in as much as we can, communication and collaboration so we can reach that consensus and that is definitely what we need.
Thanks Debbie, I go along with what you guys said. One of the first things I would like to start working on is developing an overall land use plan that gives some direction for the path to Sky Valley, looking out one, five, 10, 15, 20 years. I believe that's something that would be beneficial to have in place as a city, as either private homeowners are coming here and looking at the future or private developers coming in, looking at potentially building a facility for, you know, hotel, motel, spa, something like that. But it's hard to answer that question completely without first sitting down and doing some due diligence about what's available there. Merrill had done a lot of planning a while ago, so I know some research has been done that might be helpful to look at. But yeah, there needs to be some research done and a plan needs to be put in place. A great place to have that plan would be at the visitor center and have a little layout down there.
Suzie and I came to Sky Valley for a number of reasons. It's a beautiful place. The people, even though the word divisive has been used a lot, are very friendly. The city does a pretty darn good job keeping the infrastructure up. But we came here, as much as probably every single person here, and there wasn't an awful lot at Sky Valley. And that was one of the drawing cards. That was what we liked about Sky Valley. Most of us are 70 or more as far as our age and we've spent a lot of time working hard, raising families, and we're up here to enjoy whatever time we have left. How do we proceed? Do we, again, do we look at, "Why did you come here and was that the reason that you want to stay here or do you want to change it"? So, I think the vision has to come from the community, not just five council members and the mayor and the city manager.
All right, the property owners association, we've tried to pull together some good issues and maybe not all of them, but we've had some great responses and I want to thank everybody for no attacks and a very congenial presentation here. So, with that said, we've got one last chance for any other closing remarks and Neil, you get to start.
Once again, thank you for coming. And I know everybody that comes to Sky Valley loves Sky Valley if they stay here long enough, and if they stay here long enough, they're going to buy a home. So, we need to get younger people up here. We need to see some kids around here to use that playground equipment that the POA is going to buy and put over there. You know, what is a city? You know? What is a city? What are their responsibilities? They're to protect, they're to defend and protect us with a police force and a fire, you know, cut this from fire. And we have a great scale-in mountain, fire and rescue that we essentially hire by giving part of our village to them and we probably need to really get them more and really keep that tie strong. What else does a city do? They provide your services, your water, your roads, your, you know, infrastructure, your administration. We need it. A city is a banding together and to do, a city is what does what for us, what you couldn't hire to have done yourself as efficiently as inexpensively. So, when you spend that taxes, it all goes for good things. And I commend our city workers, our administration. We just need to talk together, reach that consensus and move forward.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to see interest in our city here in Sky Valley, what's going on. My wife and I moved here in 2004. We had one child, now we have three. They're 12, nine and six. And we do have quite a few friends that come and see us out of Columbia, South Carolina and Atlanta, especially in the summertime. They love it and they're trying to get here. And with today's technology, you know, more and more people are being able to do their businesses and other businesses work out of their house. And this is a great place to do it. I love it. I want to succeed and I'll do my best to make that happen.
I'd like to thank Doug and the POA for allowing all of the candidates to have the opportunity to stand up here in front of you and express our points of view. And I want to thank all of you for showing up to hear our points of view. I believe that all of the candidates, Ed, Bob for mayor, Debbie, Neil, Paul and Milner, as well as myself, are qualified to be in charge, if you will, running the city of Sky And I believe that every one of us will do what is ever possible to make Sky Valley what you want it to be. But after the election, I challenge each and every one of you to step up to the plate and to be heard and to make sure that whomever gets elected does the job that you want. Not, don't talk about it at coffee someplace or out to dinner with somebody. Show up at the meetings. We're videoing these meetings now. If you can't make a meeting, watch it and then call somebody and make your voice heard.
I could not agree more with you, Al. Thank you for coming. Get involved. Don't get in your groups and complain. Talk to us. Whoever gets elected, I think our hearts are all in the right place. Tell us what's important to you. I have a wish list. I'd like to spruce up things, clean ditches and change all the house numbers and I want every last one of you to sign up for the city email and stop relying on gossip to know what's going on. That's one of my big things. But sign up for committees and task forces. Get involved. Come to the city council meetings. Watch them. Thank you Linda for recording this. Your city staff does an enormous job. You know there are only 14 people, that includes the police force and the public works people who run this city. The mayor and council just set policy, they don't do the work. These folks do. And we couldn't buy enough people to do what they do. I want to thank Mayor Hewell Goodgame and the four councils that have served over the last few years for the good work they have done and I want to continue that good work. Let's move forward.
Once again, thank you. Thank you candidates. We really appreciate your thought in stepping up to the table. I think we are done unless anybody has something. One thing?
Whoever's got that list of their disc, thank you.
It's in good hands. Can I ask the board members, the newly elected board members and continuing board members to join me up front for just a minute when we're done here? But thank you everybody again for coming. Bye.